Is this bullet points at the top of page two? Is that for under R?
I have side questions.
Yeah, it should look like that.
So it's an FYI.
Okay, here we go. The time is 5:00 p.m. The Pelican Rapids City Council meeting, 12th January 2021, is called and ordered. I ask those in our audience here, council chambers, if you have not signed the clipboard, if you would do so before you leave, and every one of you please put their phones on vibrate. The first order of business is mayor and council members' oath of office, and I'm going to turn that over to Danielle.
So, um, the offices that were up for election, we each have one of them in front of you, so if you would just, I'll start with the mayor, and then we'll go Kevin, and then when Steve gets here, we'll, um, get Steve. But, um, if you'll just stand up, read your oath of office, legs right there.
Where is it?
I, Brent Fraser, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the mayor of the city of Pelican Rapids, and the county of Ottertail, and the state of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Go ahead.
Hi, Kevin Ballard, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member of the city of Pelican Rapids and the county of Ottertail and the state of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
And then Steve, when you get settled, the oath of office should be in front of you there.
All right.
Hi, Steve Foster, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member of the city of Pelican Rapids and Ottertail, county of Ottertail, Ottertail, and the state of Minnesota to the best of my ability and judgment, so help me God.
Thank you, and then if you could sign them, and I'll collect them for you after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is roll call of members, Danielle.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Marca.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Strand, or Steve Foster, sorry.
Here.
Got them. And Mayor Brent Fraser.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening, our first city council meeting of the year 2021, those in our council chambers, and also those that are joining us by Zoom. Our city council member meetings are viewed on Channel 14 on Wednesday evening. A few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Eighteenth of January, Monday, City Hall offices will be closed in honor of Martin Luther Day. Twenty-fifth of January, 4:00 p.m. is the park board meeting. Twenty-fifth of January, 5:00 p.m. is a planning commission meeting, and then our next city council meeting will be at 5:00 p.m. on January 26th. So any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comment. Anyone have any citizens' comments? Citizens' comments. Okay, see, none. Item number three is agenda additions or deletions. Any additions or deletions?
Mayor, I have a question. I'd like to, and maybe I can ask Brian, when he, call it recycle ice. You can ask me when I stand.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Move the agenda as presented. Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, and I will read that.
Stick with it.
For the minutes of the council meeting of December 8th, 2020, and there is a new that page, the minutes that are on your desk.
In air, I put motion passing.
Doing the change to a motion. Item 4B is approval accounts payable listing. 4C is the point clerk treasure, Danielle, or two. 4D is designated official newspaper, Pelican Rapids Strip. 4E is designated official depositories, Wells Fargo, Minnesota National Bank, Wells Fargo Investment and Belbank. 4F is appoint city attorneys, Crackleburg Law Firm and Larson Law Firm, D.C. 4G is approved expenses to fire, police, liquor store clerks, mayor's regional meetings and tradings. 4H is approved payment of administrator and clerk treasure bonds. 4I is approved payment of liquor store bond. 4J is Lakes Country Service Cooperative Annual Membership Renewal. 4K Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Membership Renewal. 4L, Minnesota Council of Airports Membership Renewal. 4M, Ottertail Lakes County Association Community Collaborative Annual Membership. 4N is Pelican River Pheasants Forever Raffle at VFW Post 5252 on February 27th, 2021. 4O is cigarette license of 2021, Carolyn Brown for Family Dollar and Dollar General Retail LLC, Dollar General number 11948. 4P is 2021 recreational game license for three games at Pelican Rapids Pool Hall Incorporated at 13 West Hill Avenue. 4Q is 2021 mileage, we're just set at 50 cents a mile.
Fifty-six cents.
Fifty-six cents a mile. 4R, stat reports of 4R, one police chief report in your packet, 4R2, financial report in your packet, with a bullet point property category, the LM CIT 2020 dividend of $7,989. Second. Motion second, discussion.
Can we, or should we pull item E for Wells Fargo before we're discussing item 14?
I believe Danielle's going to talk to that in her.
Yeah, I'll talk about that later.
But if we approve it as a.
She's still needs.
Yeah, I'll cover that.
Okay.
I got a plan.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion same, motion carried. Item number five, park board slash pool committee, we have Kate Martinez here this evening, who served on the board.
Thank you.
And also the minutes are in your council packet for the pool committee.
So the park board actually had a meeting on Friday, so we're having two this month because we got this idea and we wanted to move forward with it. Obviously, I'm here to seek approval on this, and the idea the park board came up with was hosting a luminary walk in the evening through our parks. We really enjoy doing it out at Maplewood State Park, and this year it's canceled because of COVID, and so the park board was like, gosh, we have beautiful parks, we're trying to enhance our trails and get people in them more, and what a great way to do that safely outside. And so we've been talking with friends in Maplewood, kind of going over their itinerary of events each year, wanting to make sure they would be okay with us doing it, not ever stepping on somebody's toes, but more enhancing both areas, and they gave us the green light on it. So I'm here to, one, seek approval on this event, and, two, there's a little bit of supplies we would need, and so there's a front and back on this, and I thought I'd just go through it quickly, and then I'll kind of seek for approval hopefully on that. So the date we came up with, February 13th, it's a Saturday, and it's the day before Valentine's, too, so we thought that it could be kind of a fun weekend to host it. The time, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. The location, so we've put this map together, and we can improve this map, this is kind of a quick one, but we've saw our park, so I'll just start, the starting point is actually in Trinity Parking Lot, but I'm just going to start at Veterans Park, just for linear to tell it. So Veterans Park across the walking, the new walking bridge, behind our hardwood store, up through the alley by Envy Salon and Old Rapids, down through Main Street, across our crosswalk, down again, past Historic City Hall, Mariposa Marcado, crossing at, we're hoping not to go all the way to the end of that block, actually, we'd like to turn where Don Perrin has the balcony kind of thing, and goes down the steps. We did call and ask if he, if we were to get approval on this, if he would also be okay with that, and he said he would love it, he's really excited about this. So you go down the steps at Pelican Drug on the opposite side of the river from Pelican Pete, along the river there, and then back up the stairs at the windmill. The reason we added that green line was if there is some weather that those steps are just unbearable, then we could loop the long way, but ideally up the stairs, and then swing a left, go across to a waterfall, then just kind of meandering through our parks there by the playground, across the bridge, down through our campground to that point, and then back up, and then it takes you to the peace trail, and then down the peace trail to Sixth Street, and then back. Now, when we walked it as a park board, we were hoping that there was a way from Sixth Street to come down Sixth Street, and then kind of loop around, but at this time, there just aren't sidewalks there of any kind, and so we felt it probably wouldn't be safe to send people on the side of the street in the evening, so we thought we would, at that point, then you turn around and mosey back. So I'm just going to kind of flip it over on the backside, these are just some of our notes that we've been going over, the details. Trinity Parking Lot will serve as the main point, park board members will be stationed throughout the trail, what I just said about the peace trail, and then we'd like to have grab-and-go smore packets at multiple campfire locations throughout. And so when our family was in Duluth, the hotel we stayed at normally has smores, and this year with COVID, they put them in Ziploc baggies, and they used, like shish kebab, wooden sticks to roast, and then you just throw it in the fire as like a safety thing with COVID, so we thought we could kind of go off that. And so that's where then the next section comes, the possible expenses. So most of the stuff, we're trying to get donations, but this part, the candles, friends in Maplewood said we could use theirs, but we would want to then give back whatever we used, so the purchase of candles, matches or whatever to light them, marshmallows, cookies with chocolate, that's just instead, as a park board, we're thinking, we'll be in charge of obviously the garbage and cleanup at the end, but there's those like fudge cookies with chocolate stripes on it, whatever, that way it eliminates Hershey wrappers and things like that. And then the wooden skewers and Ziploc baggies, so that estimating, it won't probably be $200, but we just threw that number out, if we're seeking approval for that amount of money to spend for those supplies for tonight. Donations, we have firewood, Alan Westby was really generous, going to donate all the firewood, and then we have multiple campfire pits being donated for the night. Christmas lights on the suspension bridge, we thought it wouldn't be safe to have candles just because it's a little bit narrower path. So online, we saw another luminary walk in, out in Washington State, and they wrapped their bridge with white lights, so we thought we could do that, not just on the handrail part, nothing up high. Syncing cords, I don't know, you can kind of read that. Trinity Church, so we reached out to them to see about kind of possibly using the parking lot, what this would look like, and they actually got really excited about it, and they would like to host a drive-in movie that same night. And so the peace trail, I'm sorry, not the peace trail, the luminary walk would be from 5:30 to 7:30, and then they would like to start their movie at 7:30, and so that's why we changed the initial starting point from Veterans Park to Trinity, and they said they would have their people arrange that, but then when you come into park, you could park in straight rows, they'd have people there for that, and hopefully people stay. So that would be kind of a fun collaborative event. And then the city crew about clearing the snow, we would inform Mr. Statham, Don Perrin has already given us the green light there. Yeah, and then kind of park board duties, we went over, we would just be in charge of that, stationed throughout the walking path. The main thing, I guess, I want to highlight is the fire pits, we were thinking it would be really add to the scene to have some fires and smores and whatnot, but with COVID, to keep it spread out, so we were thinking to have one fire located at the end of the peace trail on Sixth Street, to have people like a destination to come to, and then in the middle of the peace trail, there's a really nice fire pit there already, so a park board member could be there to maintain that. Trinity Church donated their fire pit at top of the hill right when you enter the peace trail, and the benches there and whatnot, and then in the campground at the point, having a campfire there, and then we thought two in Veterans Park, and then park board would be in charge of all the garbage and cleanup and setup and everything like that. So that's kind of what we were hoping to move forward with, so we're looking for approval on this, and also approval for that roughly $200 to use for supplies.
Also, any questions? How long does this walk take?
We did it, it actually, it took us an hour, but we stopped and we went back, and so it's not, you know, it's totally doable with, for young families kind of thing, yeah.
I'll move to give him approval and $200 for expenses.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
What's the movie they're going to show?
Trinity on that today, they don't know, they just said a family-friendly. I have no idea.
Probably a church movie.
I don't know.
Probably not.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And we should also approve the park board minutes and the pool committee minutes. Or motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number six is street and park report, we have Superintendent Olson here.
Yes. Let's see, it's been kind of a goofy year with not a lot of snow, so we haven't stayed as busy moving snow around as normal. We plowed like three times and have had the back-to-back storms, we had, actually had Aggies clean up downtown, and mostly due, it just got to be quite a bit down there, and I've been short a guy since second week in December, and he's now planning, he should be back, he had some surgery done, should be back next week, I'll go as well, so that's been kind of interesting also, even when we have had to plow, because moving around, jumping around, doing different, you know, kind of all split up, and we have our quarters, have our jobs, when one's gone, all of a sudden now somebody else has to fill in, and you know, we have to kind of pull, and so it takes a little longer, but. Had, last month after we plowed one time, had a steering sector go out on number 10, which is the 03 International Plow Truck, so that was a hefty expense that will be coming out actually next time, but it blew the sector out, and so it was blowing power steering fluid, it wouldn't hold power steering fluid, so it got to be kind of a mess, but. We did with the nice weather, we were able to not finish, but for the most, get a lot of riprap placed along the river, the west, that west piece of property that we acquired from Balo. We filled it in, and then we have riprap along that bank a little bit, and so that was nice to get done this fall, but Veterans, no, let's see, banners and Christmas decorations were taken down again, it seems like we just put them up and then they're down, and it's like, holy cow. Continue to maintain and flood the rink, which has been, each time we go by, there's people there, even without the warming house, so I think this year, due to nice weather, it's been kind of a nice, nice thing for everybody, so. And then, so there, so that's most of, that's my report, if there's any questions on that section of it.
On Christmas lights, is there a time we're going to have to replace any of them?
Yes, I look at them every year. Right now, I've kind of just said, we're going to have to start looking at replacing some, and you know, there's been some civic organizations that have mentioned it, too, but we're kind of waiting to see what 2024 does, what, how the streetlights are then, and instead of having to make streetlights that fit our lights, rather order the lights to fit our streetlights, so that's kind of where I'm at with that.
How many more people are using skating rink this winter?
Steve, I don't know, because we're not, we're not open, so we're not keeping a track of it this year, it's just they're coming and going as they please, you know, we put the benches out, and so they're skating and using the benches, and actually I've had at least one family call, because they wanted to borrow skates, that we got from the school, so there's all kinds of ice skates inside, but otherwise, I'm not, I'm not clear on how many are up there.
But it's pretty active this year.
It has been, each time I've gone by, it's, there's been kids out there skating, you know, even today after school, there was kids there, so.
So if kids don't have skates, they can still get them?
I, I'll just open up, like, they came with, these two young kids came with their mom, and so there's, the warming house is plumb full of skates that were brought up there from the elementary school, so yeah, and they get used when we have been open, so, but yeah, they've called, so that's good.
Any other questions for Superintendent Olson? Motion strand.
Brian, I recycle cardboard often, like, every couple days, and it's just treacherous up there, so who do I complain to? You or the county?
That's the county.
It's just terrible. They want us to recycle, so what do we do?
Yeah, I don't know, I would assume that'd be the hazardous waste, you know, the.
They never sand it, but it's just.
No.
What was the situation?
It's icy.
Icy.
Oh.
And I've seen that, I guess, I just never thought of it. I believe, I mean, I know they just rent the land from Dawkins, is it? And Stoats Fairies have bought that building, but I guess you'd have to ask the county what, if they, if they're even aware of it, you know, without anybody there, I suppose they're not now, you know, they don't pay attention, so.
We can check into that, we'll get ahold of.
I think their drivers are up there taking those boxes out, though, you'd think they would.
You'd think they'd, no, you'd think they'd slip and slide, but, and it may be such a thing, we'll just have to make a deal with them, that we'll swing in and sand it.
That's what I was waiting on, too.
Yeah, but I want to talk to them first, so I'll get, I'll get ahold of Zach at the county level, and.
Thank you.
Or maybe even Mark, Doc, and Brian, because they might, they might just be letting the county keep that stuff there, they may not have an agreement in place, but if we're willing to go, and if the county's not willing to sand, you know, if we do, that's not a big deal either, I suppose.
Not a very big space.
No.
But anyway, so, yes, any, is that, is that what you recycle ice was?
Yeah.
Okay, the only thing I, other thing I have, and it's just quick, I'm not going to elaborate on it, because they'll be back at the end of, end of the month, but I'm looking to get approval for about $2,000 to get our, retain our architect for the pool, to now update some numbers, and, and look at some solar options for it, and so it was 1950 roughly, he, it was not to exceeds, and it won't go over, he's going to do hourly for us, so he just needs to kind of crunch the numbers again, and, and look at the solar option for us and get that done.
Brian, you're talking about our pool, the way you're done?
No, 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 this is for the new pool, for the, for the new, it's the same architect that's been working on it, but he's been paid up to what he's done, and so now this is over and above what he, what he was originally contracted for, so.
You'll have that next meeting?
The pool committee will have it, yes, yep, if I get, and there is money for stuff like that in, in our investments, if we have to take it out of there, there's, there's some pool fund money, two actually, in there, so there's some that was set aside, and then some that were, I believe, donations, two different accounts, so by hiring him again, it won't rattle the whole case.
Any other questions for Brian?
Do you want, do you want to approve spending that money?
The reason.
It's not in the budget.
Right, the reason for it is because they're looking at redesigning the pool to drop the cost down, and so since they're going to be doing that, they need to basically get a little bit of, a little bit additional.
Well, excuse me, I thought you were going to do this next meeting.
No, 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 I need it now so I can get it done for next meeting, so they have more information when they come next meeting. That's all. It's all pre-planning, Brian.
I move to re-approve the $2,000 for the architect fee for the.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
And then we should also approve his report this evening, is there a motion to?
I'm moved to approve his report.
Second. I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried, thank you. Item number seven, authorized credit card use, and I'm going to turn that over to Danielle.
Yes, so this is something that we just have to go over every single year for the sake of the audit, but we did make two changes to the credit card balances this year, and that had gone through council before, but, so I'll just kind of review what it says, is that city administrator and clerk have limits of $5,000. Police chief, fire chief, street park superintendent, and liquor store manager, all are $1,000, and the library director's at $1,500, and our policy states that anything over 500 has to be approved by the city administrator, and the paperwork has to be turned in within 24 hours of making a credit card purchase. So if you have any questions, it's, it's the same policy, we just have to review it, council has to review it every year for the audit.
I'm moved to approve the credit card authorization.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried, thank you, Danielle. Item number eight is election of acting mayor, this time Councilman Foster is our acting mayor in acquisition, is there appointees that, or nominations at this time?
I nominate Steve, I think.
Second.
You hear a freight train coming.
Okay, we, you accordingly accept?
Yeah.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, there's a motion second to appoint Councilman Foster as acting mayor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried, congratulations. Item number nine is approve 2021 appointments to boards and authorities, and they were in your packet, unless there's questions, we're just moving to approve this.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number 10 is approve city fee schedule, which also is in your packet, any questions on that?
It's the question I had asked earlier.
Oh, yes.
You had to ask that again.
Oh.
Did I notice?
Okay.
That should be added.
Yeah.
What is the fee?
I will have to look back, I can't remember.
Okay.
I don't think it was that much.
No, it wasn't much, I remember, but.
It was a yearly fee.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
So it'll be that and plus whatever you guys approved for the license, pigeon license?
Yeah.
So that will be added to this fee schedule according to our council minutes.
Yeah.
Were licenses issued last year?
No.
Pardon?
Was there a license issued last year? Did any of the people that were at our meetings come and get licenses?
No.
Be surprised, I think.
I think so, too.
I'm able to approve the city fee schedule with the addition of the license, pigeon license.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same, motion carried. Item number eleven is library report. Councilor, do you have anything there?
Actually, really no. There was a lot of discussion about some topics at the library, but nothing really settled on anything other than falling back towards the roofing committee questions, because of course, the roof isn't completed, and the library was happy to hear that. They were just not interested in paying any more money.
The architect doesn't either.
Right, right.
Was there a lot of cleanup that you done outside?
There was not. There was a lot of nails and debris, you know, that were, was being picked up by both Luther and, and the library staff, whether in tires or in hand, so.
What about the?
Sounds like there's a lengthy punch list to be completed.
What about the leaky roof situation?
I think that's buttoned up. We don't know about, you know.
About repair.
We don't know about repair yet. I know there's been some.
Kurt, did you say the metal's done on the roof?
The, the roof's covered. There's, but there's, what, how do you call them?
The caps?
Caps and things like that, the, the other little things that have to take place to complete it.
Right now, it's watertight.
Apparently.
Till we get actual water instead of snow.
Yeah, we don't know.
See.
There was, there was, I should, I should bring up, uh, there was a trouble call for the fire panel. Uh, you know, that, that sits inside the library entrance, the one they use for the main entrance all the time, and that entryway. And, uh, Arbig was called to look into it, and it's quite possible that Arbig shorted something out, um, and destroyed the panel. It's gonna need to be replaced. I don't remember what the cost was.
$1,690.
$1,900.
No, $1,690.
Okay. Um, but we're still trying to figure out who's gonna do that. Probably sounds like Arbig perhaps. Unless they have something else to say about it. We didn't get that far yet. A lot of topics talked about, nothing really decided.
What's been the response from the contractor? Is he gonna just walk away from this? Or what?
I don't really have the answer to that, um, other than when the contractor was here at our meeting. Uh, everything else has been pretty much gone through with the architect as the.
Yeah, it's, it's come through the architect. So we don't, I, being on the roofing committee, I don't know that we have specifically been in contact with the contractor. We're just, we go, we, we ask our questions, or Brian kinda, Brian asks the questions to the architect and then the archi, he, he's the go-between between the contractor and the city.
Well, as I recall, we were supposed to be done by what, November 12th or 13th, something like that?
13th.
That was about the third time they would be done by a certain day.
Yeah, it's, I, I would, I would suspect that they will be writing us a check before it's done with. I mean, I, I can't see the amount of work that, I don't, I don't know. I, I could be wrong. I just, I think, I just, I don't know what it is with this whole lowest responsible bidder thing that the state feels is so important, because I think we've taken it in the shorts, at least the last two times, we've dealt with that lowest responsible bidder.
Any other questions for council and Mariah? Okay, if not, there, there is a library report packet in your council packet. Is there a motion to approve this?
Well, I mean, I, I got some other stuff to add to it. Um, just, you know, I think it's important that the council.
Before we get to this?
Before approving the report?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, Kurt talked about the fire panel and the roof. Annie presented a PowerPoint at the, at the meeting that night that kinda talked about how she comes up with her governor, or governor, comes up with her budget. I think that would, it would be beneficial if she would present that for either the budget committee or the council. But, um, I didn't ask that question. I, and to be honest with you, um, I was writing down something else, and she kinda was about a third of the way into that presentation before I actually realized what was happening. So I didn't really, and I'm not really a numbers guy anyway, so you start talking about math and some less stuff, I shut off. But she said there were eight requests for full-time, or for that full-time position, and two of those applications had been returned at that point. There may have been more since.
It was still open, yeah.
Um, they talked about the, the budget, her, her budget, and Annie recommended that they not give any raise to their employees. Um, the, but the board agreed on a 2% increase.
After, after we see what a 2% does with the budget. Pending that, next meeting, we'll have another budget to look at.
Okay, so, um, and they, they, they did confirm to both Kurt and I that the, the city had approved a 3%, but they were still working with, with that. Um, and then they talked about the, the action that we took denying the 60 hours of carryover vacation time. Um, it was pretty intense conversation for a portion of that. Um, it, just being a part of that, I think it's important, um, and I, I don't know how we go about this or what, but I think it's important that we have a joint meeting with the city council, the library board, um, some form of mediator, neutral mediator, um, just to figure out this relationship that we have going on. And I, I mean, I think it's, this is probably 10 years, I mean, probably should have been done 10 years ago. Um, but I, I, I think we need to, we need to figure this out. We need to figure out that, whether it be, I don't know. I, I just want that on everybody's radar. That, that's something we need to seriously start thinking about, is having some kind of, just roundtable, sit down and figure out what we're supposed, I mean, how it, this is supposed to work, because the way things are working now, it's not working. So I would also like to request, and I would, I don't know if this is probably a question for, for Danielle, but I'd like to request that, um, the library board meetings be posted with the possibility of a council quorum.
Oh, okay.
Is that?
They are, yeah?
I don't, behind.
Not that I'm aware of. They couldn't be, but I don't know.
I just, I, I don't know. I think it would be, I think it would be beneficial for, I mean, I, the, the, I told Brent this before the meeting, the least productive thing I could have done at that meeting that night would have been to make any kind of comment, because it would have.
You and me both.
It would have, it was redonculous. And I just think it would be very beneficial for other members of the council to, to just attend a meeting to, to kinda see, there's, there's a serious disconnect between the board and the council, and it's, it's a we versus they attitude. And I don't know if that stems from here, or if it stems from there, but it is very present. And I think a meeting, a joint meeting between the, the two boards, or the council and the board, with some kind of mediator involved that knows the statutes, that's able to speak to those questions that we have, I think that's what we need. So there.
Okay, thank you. Paul and Strand.
Tell me again about the applications. You said there were.
So, yeah, they have, since Sarah Davis is resigned and left, they've opened that position. They've had eight requests for the materials, the application materials. As of last Wednesday, two had been returned. So she will be looking at, they'll look at hiring. And she said that they were also going to not rehire one of the part-time positions.
Right, the Shelber.
I can't remember which position that is, but she was.
I think it was the Shelber, for, for budgetary reasons.
Yeah, they did say that they were not gonna rehire. And I, I believe it was the position that is, she has been out for the last, for an extended period of time.
Okay, thanks.
Prior to that.
Danielle, you will look into the fourteen.
Yeah.
Anything else, Kevin?
That's it.
Any card, any, anything for anyone else?
Was I inaccurate in any of the things I said?
As far as I could tell.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the library board?
I'm able to approve the minutes for the library.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same, motion carried. Item number 12 pertains to city council meetings, uh, set time, place, and date of regular meeting. At this time, we meet on the 2nd of last Tuesday at 5:00 PM during the months of January, February, March, April, May, September, October, November, and December. And we meet during those ti, during those dates at 4:30 PM in the months of June, July, and August. Councilman Strand.
I'm able to change the meeting time to 4:30 permanently, as it used to be. Yeah, keep everything else the same, though. Meeting parties and whatnot. And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to change the meeting times of 4:30 PM on all those months. And leave the months.
Just change the, change all the ti, meeting times.
Across the board.
Okay. Motion second, discussion?
Part of that is a cost savings to the city. We don't know the exact amount, but, um, and the argument was brought by another council person quite a few years ago that people wanted to come and be heard, and it really hasn't happened. And if somebody wants to come and they can't make it by 5:00 or 5:15, we will accommodate them. We're not gonna shut anybody else to the door here, so.
Any other discussion?
I've tracked how many citizens' comments we've had over the last two years. And I wanna take a guess. 2020, we had one, and that was Brent. He used to talk about, I think, thanking us for something or thank, ask a thank you on. In 2019, we had five. And one of those was a city employee that talked about something else that he could have done misreporting. So we're not really having a lot of people coming in. The way this board has worked and the people are the bond, we try to serve the community as best we can, and if somebody comes in, we'll give them the opportunity to talk, because I think that's the best thing we can do. But I think that then it is for us to start at 4:30.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying.
Can you roll column there?
Sure.
Uh, Strand.
Yeah.
Valer.
Why not?
Um, Mark Raff.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Fraser.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, thank you.
Just to reconfirm though, still second and last Tuesday.
Yes, okay. The dates are the same. Item number 13 is rental license report, and Don is gonna speak for that topic?
Well, I wanted to give you guys a, kind of a sense of, of where things were at with the, the rental license process. Um, and then also, the, we, we have to, I wanna talk a little bit about the rental inspection agreement. It expired, and so we need to get a new one in place. But, so we have about 50 different rental property owners, not properties, owners. This year, we had 25 properties that did not complete the process. And by complete the process means they did everything they needed to do to get a rental license issued to them by the end of the year. So that's 25. You know, most years since we put that, that hundred dollar, uh, fine, I guess I'll call it, in place, that dropped the problem we used to have down to just a couple each year. Well, this year it was 25. And you gotta think that maybe COVID had something to do with it, I don't know. But of those 25 different properties, 16 of them did not get their inspections completed. 13 of those 16 are one property owner. Okay? So that one property owner got hit with 13 separate $100 fines. That's pretty extensive. Um, of them 25 properties, seven of them paid what they needed to pay, but they didn't provide completed applications. And so that, to me, that's why if you're paying the fee and you submit the application, but the application's not completed, why not just complete it to avoid a hundred dollar fine? I don't get it. Of them 25, one of them didn't apply, didn't give us application, didn't give us payment. That was just one. And then one of them, um, and that was one that they didn't even have an inspection due. It was just fill out the paperwork, pay the, you know, the, the fee for the application, and you're good to go. They did nothing. And then one of them also didn't pay, didn't submit the paperwork, didn't pay the fee, and also has not done the inspection that they were required to do. So when we, when we start this process in September and get all these, all these reminders and, and stuff sent out to all the property owners, we send reminders out each month. So there was a reminder in October, November, December. Uh, the reminders might be a letter or a little postcard, but every single month, those that aren't done are getting reminders to get this stuff done, and they still chose not to do it. So if you haven't heard anything from property owners, especially the one that got hit with 13 different properties, you probably will. Um, we continue to try and work with them to try and get these things done. One of the things that has come up too is the rental agreement that we had with the inspector, you know, is expired. And we need to get another agreement in place because we've got 25 properties we're still trying to get done. Again, not all of them need inspections, but a, a number of them do. So that's kind of an update on the numbers, but with the agreement, the rental inspector does not believe that the hundred dollar fine is basically making that much of an impact on these getting done. done. So he is, he really only wants to do inspections between September and December timeframe. That's when, that's when our ordinance calls out what's supposed to be done, and our goal is to get it all done by the end of December. He doesn't want to have to do these inspections after the New Year, when it's January, February, because he was semi-retired. So what he's basically proposing is a change to the agreement. And so, basically, from September to mid-December, which our ordinance calls out to get this done, the rate structure will be the same. It's $30 per unit, plus if there's any reinspects, it's $25. But when, if he has to, if they don't get it done, then he has to come back from January till the end of January, so it's just that one month in 2022, his standard rate's going to go from $30 a unit to $60 a unit, and the reinspector's going to go to 40 instead of 25. And then from February 1st till the end of March, hopefully will be all done by the end, if they even drag on that long, he's going to raise that standard rate to $80 a unit, or basically twice what it is normally, and then the reinspect's going to go from, to 50. So from February till the end of March, it's going to double because people aren't getting it done. His, he tells me, it's not about the money, it's about getting these done by the end of the year, because he doesn't want to do these after the New Year, when it's, you know, cold. He's retired, he wants to do other things, whatever. But he also said that he understands that, that outside of the September to December timeframe, there are properties where somebody decides they want to basically, instead of selling their house or whatever, they want to just make it a rental. So any new rent registrations, regardless of the time of year, would be, basically be at the normal $40 per unit in '25. It's those ones that are, that are already under licenses that are just refusing to get this stuff done. So, and then, and then the new agreement basically will go from actually effective January 1 this year through, through, where do I have it down there? Would actually go through May of 2022. So it would get through the end of the, end of this year, through that January, February, March timeframe, to get all the inspections done that didn't get done when they were supposed to before the end of the year. So he actually, in speaking with him, when he first gave me the new agreement, he wasn't looking at a tiered structure. He was just going with, whatever's not done by the end of the year, basically going into the next year, everything doubles. And through discussions with him, I thought that was, you know, kind of a little bit, little bit stiff. So as we discussed it, he was willing to agree to kind of tier it a little bit, give those ones, you know, that just missed the end of the year into January, a little bit of a benefit of the doubt, and just increase it up from 40 to 60, you know. But those that push it beyond into February, March timeframe, that's when he said, that's, that's why I want to basically double it. So that's the, that's the agreement we have, and that's, that's really is with it. Unfortunately, we need the inspector, we need, we need an inspector to finish what we have in place right now, what we're trying to accomplish right now. So we have, we have no other options, other than do our inspections. So I, I, my recommendation is we approve the agreement. Obviously, it's good for basically a year and a half, and then we'll be looking at it again. But because of the fact that we, we have inspections that need to get done, and he's coming on Thursday to do one of them that didn't get done. So my recommendation is to approve the agreement and...
Is there a motion?
I have a question. Will you read about the numbers again? You said there's 50...
There's, yeah, there's, there's 50 different owners.
Property owners.
Property owners. Twenty, and so 25 properties, way more than 50 rental properties, but there's 20, there was 25 properties in town that did not get everything done, they needed to get done by the end of the year. So they were hit with that penalty.
Thirteen of those were one person?
Thirteen of those were one person that needed to do inspections. Need paperwork plus inspections on his properties, and he did not do it.
Does the owner have any concrete reason why they didn't get it done?
Well, a lot of them we have heard from. But there were some of them that, that said, you know, their tenants were concerned with the COVID going on. And so we worked with, we worked with those because we assured the tenants, in most situations, the landlords, I should say, we assured them that the inspector has taken every precaution possible. He's in the voluntary voyage group. He, he wears a mask, social, he stays away from everybody in the apartment, you know, social distance. He puts on a new pair of gloves every apartment, so even if he's in an apartment building with 32 units, he's going through 32 pairs of gloves. So that, so when he, when he has to touch stuff in each different unit, he's using a new pair of gloves. So he's taken every precaution. So there, there has been a couple instances where the, the property, you know, the tenants were really super concerned about it, and so the landlord or the owner just asked, can we kind of hold off, see what happens with this COVID thing, you know, after a month or so, and have the inspections done then? And because we've had them conversations, and we're willing to have them conversations with others, we've done that. So we're working on getting the inspections done for them COVID reasons. But, but in these particular cases, these 25, nobody's given us any reason. I will say that in the, it applies to the 13 from one property owner. They've been told, if, you know, it's COVID, it's COVID. So they've been told, then give us the addresses, because not all 13 of them are COVID, they just can't be. Give us addresses that we can work with so we know what's going on. They've been told that three or four times.
I believe that.
And they don't, they don't, they haven't given us their addresses, so...
I think that argument, given especially with some of the elderly folks that live in some of these apartments, I know a few personally that do not leave. I don't know how they're surviving, other than, I mean, they're getting, I mean mentally, I don't know how they're surviving. But I believe there are people that are afraid of this situation. For those people, there is no answer for them. If they're renters, they're landlords, aren't, they're either going to have to evict them or they're not letting people in. I wouldn't either if I was that terrified. So I don't, but if you say none of these 25 are those people that are legitimately...
They don't know, because he hasn't provided them.
Yeah, we're, we're working with anybody.
You said you've been in contact with, with these other people.
There's, there were some not, not among these 25, there were others that brought up that concern. There was some of those that brought up that concern, after explaining to them the steps that the inspector takes, they were fine with, okay, and they went in, even though they had a concern, they, they took the precautions, you know, knew he was going to be taking precautions, and he let them. Ultimately, they, he was able to go in and see them or inspect them. And there was other ones that still had the concern. And so we're working with those.
Right, as long as, as long as, I think it's important that we do work with those people, my point.
Yep.
I mean, it just, you know, if it gets into later, this COVID and these different strains, people are terrified of it. So if they don't, if they don't still want it, and we, we know of those, then I think it's legitimate that we need to work with them.
Yep, there we are.
If they're not responding back to you, these landowners, well, then we got, got something else going on.
The other end of that argument, though, is that people are using it as an excuse.
Well, some, but you know what? You can't determine who is and who isn't.
At least they've communicated.
Right.
Yeah, see, and that's just it, because those that basically have, have given us that as a reason for, you know, their concern, and, and we've gotten that as their reason, that was well beyond, you know, well before we got towards the end of the inspections dates. Now, we've got 25 that just don't want it. They're not giving us a reason. So now, like you said, that's going to, in some cases, that's probably going to be their reason.
Right.
Yeah. So, I mean, you have, you have to just take that as, but again, somebody comes out and says, we're all 13 of them. We're all COVID. Really?
So the, the property owner that got hit with the $1,300, is that, that continues to...
Yes.
Plus the $10 every...
Yes.
So he has $1,300 fine, plus $10 per day, per unit.
And he knows that.
Yeah.
Or they know that.
And you still haven't got the addresses?
Nope.
And Don, are those 13, are those, is that one building, or?
No.
That many units, or what?
That many units. Actually, that many properties.
That many different properties.
So we're talking a lot of units, though?
Well, it could be one that has two apartments in it, it could be just one. But it's more than 13 units.
Several addresses, though.
Yes.
Yeah. At least 13 addresses.
At least 13 addresses.
Administrator Sola again has his recommendation. Anyone want to make a motion on that?
Well, of these 25, have any of them got this done since the end of the year?
Uh, one of them is being inspected tomorrow. No, sorry, Thursday.
Yes, Thursday.
Yeah, he, so he's continuing to schedule to get the ones done that need to get done.
So there are some property owners who are motivated to get this...
Sure, yep.
And this is the first year we've had an issue like this?
We always have a couple that don't get it done by the end of the year, but this year's been...
Not like this.
Not like this. And actually, yeah. This, yeah, it's, and that's why, you know, if, if they're giving us, if they have COVID concerns, like the ones that have, you know, brought that, you know, concern to us, that's why we're working with them.
And it should have, I, and I think it was, the one I'm referencing, which I'm sure you're aware of, I'm sure that was brought to your attention prior to, not after the fact that they were due.
All of them have been brought prior to, not after the fact, that we, that we're working with.
Not these.
None of these.
Right.
We don't, we don't know the reason why they haven't.
Right, but if, if they had a legitimate concern early on, they should have brought it to the attention prior to the expiration of the rental agreement.
Especially when, like I said, every single month, from September going forward, we have sent them reminders, you would think that they would at least make some type of contact with us, and they choose not to.
So it's... Well, I'll move we adopt the city administrator's recommendation on the new agreement with 40, 25, 60, 40, and 80, 50. Be structural, September through December, January, and then going to March.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion?
Is that taking effect then now, this January, on Thursday?
It's taking effect as of January 1st, but it really, you know, 2021, the first of the year, but it really, whether it starts then or it starts tomorrow, there was nothing in the middle about it in between that anyway, so...
Discussion?
So, Mayor, if there are tenants that are just truly paralyzed, someone coming in, I mean, will we make accommodations, or?
We are.
Oh? What are we doing then?
We're, we're basically, for those that got ahead of us before the end of the year, knowing that they weren't going to get done before the end of the year, we didn't charge them a fine or a penalty. And we're just now, at this point, we have a record of them, and we're just going to, you know, see how COVID goes, and work to get it done. You know, that's...
But no penalties?
But no penalties.
Are you talking about an individual tenant, like Kurt was willing to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I would just, we'll get through this COVID thing, and then...
Any more discussion? Carry down, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Over and standing?
Thank you.
Carry it.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is Wells Fargo closing. Danielle's going to speak for that, she can probably answer Paul Strahan's question you had earlier.
I'm going to try. So we received a letter from Wells Fargo saying that they're closing this branch. And that's where the city does their main day-to-day banking. And so my plan is to move the main day-to-day banking out of Wells Fargo, but it's going to take some time. So that's why I wanted to get it approved, at least for this year, because really we still are using it for at least part of 2021. But then I'll be moving the day-to-day stuff to the other two banks in town to convenient state. Because right now, we're running to either T L or Fergus at least once a week to drop off our deposits. And this, I was willing to do it for a while, I don't want to do it forever. It's just more convenient to have a bank, oh, in town, a local, somebody local that I can call up, because I don't have that now.
And it is really important that we kind of take our time and think through the steps that we need to make, because all of our state, the money we get from the state, LGA, everything comes through electronically, and it's automatically put in that account. We don't, you know, we look it up each day to see what's come in. So all the state agencies, you know, everybody sends it to that account. So we have to make that transition so it goes to a different bank and everything else, so...
So how will you split up between the two banks? How will you work in the base bank?
Well, I already have accounts that I'll, the city's always, always utilize all the banks in town. I, I believe, kind of what I've been told is I can just give them a copy of my client analysis statement, and they can tell me what they can do for me. So that's kind of what I'm going to do, is I'll just start with that, providing that to both banks and see if, if they, I'm assuming in the state age that they, you know, because there's special stuff you have to do with government funds, and assuming that they can do all that, but I just need to make sure that everything's going to be good and covered.
Yeah, we try, and, you know, we've had this conversation too. We, we want to try and be as, as close to having the same amount of funds in the two banks that, that are in our community and do things in our community as possible, as we can. So, and if state bank were just, get a driver, it'd make it a lot easier, but... Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Danielle? This will require no motion. Okay, thank you. Item number 15 is consider liquor store lease payoff done.
Yeah, this is a good one. So our liquor store lease has about nine more payments left, and each, each payment is about $24,000. Our last payment would be June of 2025. I was looking at this, and talking to Danielle a little bit, we have a savings account right now, just a savings account for the liquor store total just short of $695,000. Our payoff for the liquor store lease is $192,528.
Say again?
So I would like to take roughly, let's just round up, I'd like to take $200,000 of that $700,000 and pay out the liquor store lease, which will save us about $21,000 in interest. It makes sense to do it.
Yeah. How much are we, how much are the payments now, Mr.?
The, it's, it's...
Nine payments of what?
Twenty-four, 23, 760, so $24,000.
I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll second it.
Makes no sense not to.
We got a second and a third here.
My fourth.
Any more discussion? Discussion, discussion. Carry down, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Over and standing? All in favor. Thank you. Thank you. Item number sixteen, city administrator report.
Yep, since the last meeting, basically I had a department head meeting to kind of kick off the new year, working with Danielle to put together the agenda for tonight's meeting. I attended a Skype meeting, you know, basically it's the monthly or whatever Skype meetings we've been doing with Mindot on the twenty-twenty-four project. There was another one, just a reminder for Stephen Brent, that there's another one on this Thursday. I took some vacation time, a couple of weeks at the end of the year or two, to burn up my vacation, and still working on police department issue, personnel issue. Had a little bit of things that I was doing with the, with the City Hall remote working-from-home capabilities, but I think we pretty much got that all scored away, and we're set to go there if anybody needs to self-quarantine or whatever. Spent time on our new board, learning how to use that, and hopefully we'll be able to make a lot of use out of that thing. It should make same things from across the room and whatever, a whole lot, a whole lot better.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah. I had a conference call with Sourcewall that's doing the work with the Planning Commission, or the Steering Committee on the Comp Plan, just kind of had a, he wanted to talk a little bit about their next meeting agenda and some of the things that they're gonna be talking about. I'm gonna attend that meeting, just from a standpoint of just listening in a little bit and sharing with them the things, you know, this Steering Committee is really, hasn't been a part of city planning, a lot of them, they haven't been a part of the Comp Plan discussions in the past. We're gonna talk a little bit about what's been accomplished since the last Comp Plan was done, so just sharing a little bit about that. I did hold a virtual meeting with Danielle and Brian and I, with the emergency manager at the county level, to talk a little bit and get a little bit more familiar with this wave alert or smart nine-one-one notification system. And we've still got some work to do on that. Well, they've got some things that they need to set up so we can continue to set up our alerts and be ready to go come storm time, winter storm or whatever, because we're not quite there yet. But, and the other thing about that is, is trying to get the word out that if people in the community are not signed up for smart nine-one-one, they should do that, because we don't use the code red anymore. We had over probably a thousand people signed up for code red, and I'll bet you we don't have but maybe eighty people signed up for the smart alert or smart nine-one-one, so...
It's the water bill, right?
Yes, we're continuing to get the word out, to try and get people, because that's the, that's how we are able to, you know, send, Brian was gonna send a, send an alert down Main Street, letting people know, letting the community know as a whole that, you know, we're gonna clean snow downtown, that type of thing is one way we'd like to use it. But right now, I don't think anybody would get that notice. The eighty, the eighty people that are on our notification right now don't necessarily, aren't necessarily in the city, but have signed up for it for one reason or other. So there might be some elected officials, there might be some employees, but...
I was wondering, honestly, because I saw it in the newsletter with the water bill, and I had tried to sign up for it like a week before that, and I got a notice via the little thing that said my information was inaccurate and it wasn't working. So I wonder if there was a glitch, all my information was exactly the same?
And you went through the, to the county's website to do it?
I can do it.
Okay, well, if you, if you try it again and you have a problem, let me know.
Yeah, I'll try it.
Because I'll get with, I'll get with Patrick on it and let him know there's might be some problem with that, so. I was a part of a Mindot Aeronautics Aviation System Plan outreach webinar, where they were just kind of wanting to get information from a lot of the airports, you know, kind of airport needs, that type of thing, so that they can kind of put their cost estimates together for the state for the next session. I was in a couple of different virtual meetings with Otterdale County Community Development. One of them had to do with the additional county relief COVID funds that they're, that they're trying to get out to businesses and stuff. I did, I did get a flyer and some information from them and sent it to the chamber to have the chamber blast it out to all the businesses. This is above and beyond the monies that, that the KESAC dollars that they had before. This is kind of like another pot or another round in a sense. Then the other meeting was with the Community Development Authority and Minnesota Housing Partnership, and we're gonna, I'm gonna have a little call with Minnesota Housing Partnership tomorrow morning. They're, we're planning on having them come to the Planning Commission meeting at the end of the month. And the purpose of them coming to the Planning Commission meeting is to explain to the, to the Planning Commission what Minnesota Housing Partnership has to offer. They're gonna, hopefully, one of the reasons for the call tomorrow is to kind of have a discussion with them about what I think would be beneficial for them to go over at that meeting. Specifically, you know, tell them, we'd really like you to have specific information about our community, housing in our community, and then also the resources. But one of the things, just kind of FYI, we'll all be getting this invite, because this meeting, you know, when the posting goes out for the Planning Commission meeting at the end of the month, like we always, you know, include that a quorum of the council will be there, well, we are going to basically make sure that you guys get that information or that invite, too, because it'll be a virtual meeting, but they also meet in the chambers, so. But because of Minnesota Housing Partnership and what, being there and sharing, I think it would be great information for the city council to get, but also we're gonna be inviting that Planning Commission Steering Committee to be a part of this, too, so they kind of get also an idea of what, not only, not only what Minnesota Housing Partnership can do, but also, you know, and their resources, but also the information specific to Pelican Rapids community as far as housing needs and, you know, all that type of stuff, too, so.
Do you know when that'll be?
That's gonna be the twenty-fifth is the next Planning Commission meeting. So that's, I think, gonna be the one agenda item, because they're saying that pretty much is gonna be an hour, depending on the conversation, the questions and that type of thing, it could be an hour, an hour and a half. Also attended the December seventeenth swimming pool meeting. As far as annual reports, I've submitted our Wetland Conservation Act annual report to the state. I have completed and submitted our annual pretreatment report to the MPCA. I did attend the Pelican Rapids Local Foods, Local Places Marketplace virtual meeting, and the council, I think, will hear more about that. If you remember, Local Foods, Local Places was here at the council, she came and shared. We're gonna come, I believe they're shooting for the end of the month to present the council with the outcome of their plan that they got together. And then I also met with Brian Olson and Troy Johnson of Unique LLC. Unique LLC is the one that put the apartment out on west, or the end of Third, the northwest out there, and they were supposed to have all their buildings and everything done by the thirty-first of December, twenty-twenty, and they've got two buildings up in that twenty acres we gave them, so we're working to get that, the remainder of that, the end of that they could transfer back to the city. So I met with them to talk about that and get that going, so that's my report.
Any questions for Don?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seventeen, may I report a few items that some of these guys have talked about already? Conducted a conversation with the mayor at Pacific City Hall end of December, attended twenty-twenty-four Complete Street Project meeting, and off that meeting, I talked to Pelican Rapids School Superintendent Brian Cork regarding that project, you know, when the school put that addition on a few years ago, they wanted that drop-off intersection at the intersection of fifty-nine and Fourth Avenue, and the state said that wasn't allowed, but now the state is willing to entertain that idea, not saying they're gonna do it. And Superintendent Cork was interested in that, so I'm gonna keep up in touch with that. Also talked with Pelican motel owners regarding turning lanes. When we go up Highway fifty-nine, we get up to the turkey plant, they're planning on having turning lanes, left turn, right turn lanes in the center of the highway, and Pelican Motel was also interested in that. We never talked about that at our Skype meeting, but they are interested in that also. Conducted a telephone call with Wishire Barbershop regarding the library roof project and his concerns at that point. Attended West Central Initiative Coffee Flash Meeting at seven AM one morning, when there was area legislatures on the meeting talking about the upcoming legislative session. Attended a virtual and outdoor community building workshop Zoom meeting, met with a few business owners. Attended a leachate meeting here at City Hall with Administrator Sola and the vendor talking about taking leachate waters from landfills, you know, around this area, and we're still working on that at this point. Attended Otterdale County COVID nineteen virtual meeting. Did visit by phone with Wells Fargo Regional Manager regarding the closing of the Pelican Rapids Wells Fargo Bank. Also met with the new mayor at Earhart, Mayor Gary Statham. I just talked about the relationship between Pelican Rapids and Earhart. Attended Local Foods, Local Places Zoom meeting, and also a Pelican Rapids Marketplace Zoom meeting last week. Attended a Coalition of Greater Minnesota's virtual meeting, and I had to deal with climate change, resiliency, and wastewater treatment plans, so I'm going to hear something coming on the fight down that road on that. And I met with Administrator Sola to review the agenda for this evening's council meeting. Any questions?
Thank you.
At this time, we're gonna recess our council meeting and go into our annual EDA meeting. I will call to order the annual EDA meeting of Tuesday, January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. Are there any additions or deletions to this meeting? Any additions or deletions? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
We'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Dunn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Hold the same, motion carried. Item number three is election of officers. At this time, from the EDA or Economic Development Authority, we have the President Randy Brager, Vice President Steve Foster, Treasurer Steve Strand, Assistant Treasurer Don Sola, Secretary Danielle Hartoon, and members Kevin Ballard and Kirk Markcraft.
Move to approve as presented.
Yep.
Discussion, discussion. Harry Dunn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Item number four, approval of the minutes of January fourteenth, twenty-twenty, which are your package?
I'll move to approve, guys.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Dunn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Hold the same, motion carried. Item number five is membership renewal for Greater Minnesota Partnership. Don, do you want to touch on that?
That's the same one that we've been doing the last few years. You guys have pretty much already approved it on the budget, it's just a matter of approving it through the EDA.
About five hundred dollars.
Still five hundred dollars. Yep.
Move to approve, membership.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Dunn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same, motion carried. Item number six, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Still will.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Meeting adjourned. Now we'll go back into our city council meeting, which is item number nineteen, to review the EDA actions. I'm looking for a motion to approve those actions.
Move.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion. Harry Dunn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same, motion carried. Item number twenty, seeing no other arrangements, the agenda is to adjourn.
Yeah.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, council.
What time does the Planning Commission meet? Five o'clock?
Yes.